Let the best end these begins.
We sent in a rescue party to make sure it's drowned.
Back to order here and then move on to item 11. This is Director Beerke's item for USGS Hydrology Conference. Galen.
Sure, for those of you, I am Galen Hogestra, and I'm hydrologist with the US Geological Survey here in Rapid City. But not necessarily here to represent USGS, here to talk about our hydrology conference. Most of you have attended this in the past, but I know there's, it's like there's some of you that may not have, so that's fine. You can kind of read the overview if you want, but basically this is a conference that we do every April. We bring together researchers from federal, state, university, local governments, lots of, we've got a lot of private consultants and contractors that come out and do presentations. A good chance to network, just share with each other what's going on with water, natural resources, earth sciences, we try to keep this broad. But we need to, you know, kind of what I want to do is emphasize that we don't do this alone, you know, I'm with the USGS, but we're just one of many organizing entities here. We get lots of help from the National Weather Service, Respec, South Coast School of Mines, the ENR, and you guys, of course. So that's why I'm here, here to request $2,000 towards this conference, as much as you guys have given to us in the past. And how this works is usually, sometimes just before the conference, you can tell us to check for 2,000, you get sponsorship for our luncheon, you sponsor the John T. Laux's distinguished lecture. There's a biography on who John T. Laux is and why you guys are sponsoring, or why we named the luncheon speaker after John. As part of this, you guys get two free registrations for your staff or board members, and also half-price registrations for anybody else, so there's that. And also, wanted to make sure, like, send out an invitation if anybody wants to be on the planning committee for this. We meet next week. As part of the planning committee, we, the biggest thing is we try to figure out who to bring in for keynote speakers, if there's any other ideas on what we want to have on the program, so it's a chance for you guys to maybe influence that a little bit. If anybody's interested in that, just get ahold of me, so. With that, that's what I had. Any other questions?
I've attended that the last couple of years here. I think you guys do a great job with it. This past conference that was held this year, I noticed that even though we did contribute to it, we were not recognized as sponsors. Can you tell me why that was?
Oh, I think you were.
No.
It was in the program.
We're sponsors for the luncheon.
Yep.
And I recall them saying that Respec was the entity noted by the speaker, the moderator, as having sponsored the luncheon. We were not mentioned.
Okay.
I was there, and we were not mentioned. So do you know why that was?
It was a mistake.
Are you sure?
Plain and simple. It was, I can, I can post the transcripts of what I wrote out and show you the signs that we printed in front of the luncheon as you walk in. It's the same sign it's used for the last five years. Yeah, it's just, it was a mistake.
An oversight?
I'll double-check. An oversight. But I won't.
I'd make a motion.
Fair observation.
I'd make a motion when we fund the $2,000 request for the Black Hills Hydrology, is it western side of the conference?
I second.
Could you repeat that?
I'd make a motion to refund it.
Fund $2,000 to the hydrology conference. Seconded by Getty. The other discussion. Fair observation. It may have reminded me of a possible discussion I had that came after that conference, but possibly reinforce that. Galen, are we considered a prime sponsor?
I'll get to you in a minute, young man. Thank you.
You're not the biggest sponsor.
Okay.
Respec usually has that, a lot of contributing.
Just one of the upper-level sponsors of five you mentioned or so?
Right. You'd be probably the number two as far as monetary goes, and the rest are very involved with the various aspects of helping the planning committee and getting things organized.
What is the cost to put that conference on, do you know?
Sure. So we run this conference. Kind of dig into the, how we operate this thing. The School of Mines, School of Mines Technology Foundation is actually the accounting for this conference, so that's why, like, all the checks go to, are made up to the School of Mines Foundation, and that's how we do all the accounting through this. But we operate this for somewhere on the order of 15,000 to 20,000 dollars per year, depending on attendance numbers and things like that, so.
We're funding 10% of it.
Right, yeah. And the bulk of the funding comes from registration fees.
Just to add noise again, Galen, how long have you been organizing this?
Well, this is my second year. I mean, before this, Janet Carr was the most familiar face who did all the language for this, long as trying to outskirt Janet, but it's done over the last 15 years.
We really appreciate you taking over. I'm also on the planning committee, and I apologize to the board, usually I, I mean, at your guys' meetings, immediately after the hydrology conference, so that it's fresh in everybody's mind. And I'm afraid this year, this spring, from April on through July, I was out in the field and doing lots of stuff, and I completely ignored you guys, sorry. But I'm sure the slip-up was just, just a matter of Galen not having experience in the, I don't know, the practice on giving the speeches and stuff up in the front for the luncheon. But I do know all of the, all of the brochures I've been had, or all of the programs, they all had guests fill the water and put on them, so that it showed that you were part of, or a program, that you were, that you were a sponsor.
I think I happened to catch the news piece on local news. I think our logo was pictured in that, in that news clip somewhere throughout that article, so.
But we do appreciate all your help that you give us.
Any other discussion on the motion, fund $2,000 to the hydrology conference? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, an aye?
Aye.
I heard two, more than two.
Who was the other one? Moss? Gotcha.
Motion carried. Item number. So are you gonna invoice us sometime before the conference, or? Just so I know what to expect.
Yep. I'll send them in voice this spring, sometime before.
Okay, item 11, or 12, excuse me. Director Getty, you introduce this one?
Sure. I have a constituent in District 5 that's having septic tank enforcement issues on his property. I was out there today and viewed the property. I've been around septic tanks and water wells my whole life. I currently have had, my current residence, I've been in 40 years, so I have some, some experience in that regard. Anyway, Mr. Schaub has already paid a fine for city and county, so-called city and county violations, and there are grandfather clauses in here that I believe should be applicable to his situation, but we haven't been able to get a, I believe we haven't received any confirmation from the state in that regard, and the city and the county seem to disregard that stipulation. In my view, and I am certainly no professional in the septic tank realm, but I believe he has a functioning, properly designed septic tank and drainage, drainage field. So I, I'm going to let Mr. Schaub, Rodney Schaub, explain maybe a little more what he seeks to do, but I believe that he would like some help in mitigating the court's decision in his case, and, and maybe some reinforcement from us to spur the state to back his position, so.
Do you care to present on your status and the history of it, or whoever you delegate to do such?
Thanks, George.
Well, we can, we can both come up here. Last time I was here, I was probably the only criminal in the room, and now it's us. Seriously, we're both criminals. So last meeting was with me. Mines under appeal, and I'm guessing that Rod is probably gonna want to appeal his decision, or not his decision, the decision against him, as I have, and looking for, as Director Getty said, looking for assistance in whatever manner, whatever shape, form that assistance can take from you folks. Of course, the biggest assistance is to get the water management board, and have them declare whether that rule is a rule or not. That's, that's the long-range goal. In the meantime, like I say, we're both criminals, and you look at this thing, and, well, he found guilty last week.
Guilty of?
Guilty of violating a city ordinance, and this is the thing that's just silly, silly.
Septic ordinance.
City ordinance, 13.20.800, 13.20.870, and 1.12.010. He lives in the county. Lives in the county. Rapid City came after him. Their ordinance, as I argued and argued in 2000, or, excuse me, when the city passed that ordinance in 2008, the statute they used said one mile drinking water of well, a public water supply within one mile. There's no way in hell there's any wells within one mile of Elkdale Road. Rapid City wells are all on the west side of town, three, four, five miles away, right? That ordinance, that city ordinance is just plain invalid. But nobody will stand up, and here's my speech. I was probably 24, 25 years old the first time I heard the expression, "Power corrupts." Absolute power corrupts absolutely. Kinsley Groat from Rapid City, used to be Paynton County, she's on a power trip. Absolute power trip. She told this guy, and I've heard her say it, not at this trial, I say it way after his trial, but she says that the city and the counties can be more stringent than the state. That's unbelievable. And she'll get away with that. She'll be on that power trip and tell somebody like he and me, challenge him, and hopefully you folks will join in. Who in the hell in his right mind would believe that a city can overrule the state, or a county can overrule the state? The tape, I heard her say on the tape, that, that rule 5374, 530104, that I shared with you last meeting, says you're exempt under these conditions. Kinsley Groat says that that doesn't apply to cities and counties. Well, who in the hell does it apply to? There's nobody left in South Dakota except cities and counties. Bottom line, this guy's on a power trip, an absolute power trip, along with others, and if we don't stand up, I think Rod, I'm standing up, of course. Whether Rod will stay with me, I don't know. And I think last time, I think Mike Mueller's wife, Jim Mueller's wife said, "They stand up next time around," but. That's my speech, however you folks can help, fine. The rule clearly says that he's exempt. There's been absolutely no evidence presented at the trial, I understand, that city doesn't have a pre-75 system. Pre-75, non-surfacing, non-contaminating, non-modified, is exempt. The city's taken that away from him. Anything else to say?
Well, they're gonna be talking about it in 15.
Well, yeah. But anyway, imagine, and here, here he goes, a city, city drug him in, the county, it's good that they didn't try to drag me in. I've been in handcuffs, thank you.
So, next step?
So what do you plan on doing then? Do you plan on appealing this?
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, I haven't actually done it, so I could still back out yet, but it's kind of, it kind of seems to be, I'll probably.
Could I ask what the fines levied were?
Excuse me?
What the fines were for this? Is there jail time, or just monetary fine?
Well, part of the deal was, George came up with a thing that said that anytime that the fine has a plea, or a jail term as part of the fine, could be that you can.
Demand a jury trial.
You can demand a jury trial, so I, the day before, I put in a motion demanding a jury trial, so you get into court and they say, well, you know, what do you, the judge asks the prosecutor, well, what do you do in these deals like this? And she said, well, we waived the jail sentence, and then, so then you don't get, but you don't get your jury trial, so. So they took any jail time off the table.
Took that right away from you by several waiver.
But they did the same thing to him, too.
His fine was 250 bucks, and here, I forgot to tell you this, today I went to the courthouse for my own purposes, and while I was there, I looked for his, Kinsley didn't even have the decency to file or to provide the judge with an order or a judgment that he can appeal from. This is sloppy beyond belief. At least I have a judgment of conviction, he doesn't. And I, I lay, you know, the prosecutor is the one that's supposed to present it to the judge, the judge doesn't run making up these stuff. He signs, she signs. So right now, he doesn't even have something to appeal from.
But I can, I can put in, I think I can put in a.
Well, yeah, that's the side issue. The issue is, she is, she's on a power trip beyond belief. And when I was 24, 20, whatever age I was, power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts. Now I know what the hell that means. It took me a couple of years to figure it out, but now I know.
Got some questions.
I have a question.
Bob was up, and I'm gonna come to you.
Okay.
Please. Can you tell us, tell all of us what exactly the violation was, George?
It says, here's the complaint. That on or about 30th day of January 2018, in the one-mile jurisdiction of the city of Rapid City, county of Paynton, state of South Dakota, Rodney P. Schaub did commit the public offense of city onsite domestic wastewater disposal system ordinance violation, in that he violated those three sections that I told you about before. So here's a county guy violated, violated a Rapid City ordinance.
George, could you expound a little bit on that, on that violation? Would that be mostly a permitting violation, not, not a matter of function of the system, but they were fighting him because he did not obtain a permit?
An operating permit, yes.
Yeah.
And to get an operating permit, it's not just going down and putting in 20 bucks, you gotta get it pumped. You gotta get it pumped.
Well, and, and.
Well, no, the word's observed, and that word is very, very critical. Inspection implies some kind of government authority, the observation is done by a pumper. And that was fought, I, we, the county, I fought them for a year and a half before they finally overwhelmed us, but the word is observation, it's the key word versus inspection.
Do you have a follow-up to that?
Yes.
Sorry, this case, I'll get back.
I've dealt with, 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 my, the same pumper, this gentleman has dealt with, and I've dealt with him for 40 years, and he's a, he's a, he's an honest, decent businessman, and he's, he's, he's very easy to work with for the homeowner, and they're making this pumper, they're, they're holding his license over his head and making him the bad guy to do the city's work. The city takes the money, and, and they're using this, this, the septic tank man to pump this stuff, and he's supposed to do a visual inspection and sign off on that form and turn it in, and they're making him the bad guy, instead of the city coming out there and looking at it.
And that was one of the many arguments I used in the year and a half. We drug the county out. The city passed this ordinance in two meetings, maybe three meetings. It took the county 24, 25 meetings, mostly because of some guy named George and his wife. And one, Ken Moss helped.
Hey, don't you give me no.
But we drug him out, that was one of the arguments, yeah, she put in a, she put in a pumper in a hell of a position. Is he gonna be, keep his business going? Is he gonna be the bad guy? Or is he gonna be, you know?
Lose his license.
Well.
Is he licensed as an inspector by the city or county?
No, 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 that's why, that's why it's observation. That's why they settle on the word observation versus inspection. Inspection implies something more official.
But they're still holding him.
But, but observation is not quite as critical as inspection. Kind of took us four meetings to get that, I think four or five meetings to get that settled. It says observation on the form, doesn't say inspection.
Just, just one question. Who was your attorney? When you went before the judge, who represented you?
Me? Mike? Who was mine? I didn't have one.
If you're opposed against jail time, they're supposed to offer you a public defender.
Well, they did.
And you didn't take the public, you, you thought you were gonna do it all by yourself?
Well, yeah, it's not that hard.
It's in the law. The law says he's exempt. Why does he have to prove himself innocent?
I understand that, but just the way things go, sometimes it helps to have a.
If the paperwork were filed appropriately.
But it's okay. I'm not gonna do that.
Please continue.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
I just, well, I don't, I don't know if you ever knew this tonight, I thought I told you, but my brother's a lawyer, and he didn't, he didn't even want to help me on this, and... Well, at first he was going to, but then he backed away from it, because he, he doesn't live here, so he would've had to travel, and, but.
I think I got this straight. You're the guy that pumps out septic tanks? That's your business?
No, no, no.
It was your.
He came to us at the last meeting and made us aware of this situation.
He's the landlord.
You're the landlord where, where the septic tank is?
Yes.
And, and they got you for not pumping it out?
For not, how did, how is it actually worded?
Six-year permits. You have to get an operating permit.
Securing, securing a permit.
Every six years. Okay, gotcha.
Failure to secure a Class A sewer permit, I think, is somewhat.
They, the city calls theirs a sewerage. Sewerage, I've never heard such a word. The county calls it operating permit.
The only permits that were given were during the installation.
This is above and beyond the installation, and that's my biggest argument, is de facto. And I'll tell you, and I've told probably everybody in here before, but 30 years ago, if Paynton County would've said, you're gonna have to pump when we tell you to, there's no way in hell I'd have bought property in Paynton County. No way in hell. They would've given, couldn't give me a property in Paynton County, I would never commit myself to the future.
Can you sell it now?
Well, I, sure I could sell it now.
Would you?
But I've got a vested interest, you know, I've got.
Topic, Mr. Schaub.
Anyway.
This, this all started in '08. There was a lot of back history on the contamination of Rapid Creek and a lot of the things that we get involved with. What they did was, they told everybody in Paynton County you had to have your septic tanks pumped and file a permit within the next five or six years, and everybody, most people did that. Well, the people that didn't do that, they tracked them down, and then they issued them these citations, and they probably never even looked at his system. I don't know that.
No, they can't.
And so his system is not in question here, at least not to me, but they're, they're trying to make him do things that the state's law says he doesn't have to do.
What happens if you don't pay the fine?
I already did. George kind of chewed me out on that, but I, I would've had to pay it, to put in an appeal anyhow. And I figured if I didn't pay it, he, the judge gave me a week, I figured he was gonna issue a warrant, is what he would do for me.
Yeah, you can't file an appeal unless you pay. I, I found that, yeah.
One of the things that's most egregious about this is that it's taxation without representation. You're charged by the city, you can't, there's no city councilman for the one-mile buffer.
I even brought that up, and they don't care, even the Supreme Court doesn't care about that. They said, nah, you're.
But that's taxation without representation, and that was one of the major reasons for the Revolutionary War in the first place, and we've come full circle.
It's even worse, it's governance. It's, he's taken, the city's taken his liberty away, and he doesn't even have a vote. It's bigger than taxation, it's liberty. His liberty is being deprived by a Rapid City ordinance. That's power, this is like Twilight, I think most everybody in here probably all remember Twilight Zone. This to me is, this is an episode for Twilight Zone, if Rod Sterling ever comes back. This is Twilight Zone, I'm not, you know, it's Twilight Zone.
So there's no source, there's no point source, there's no failure, there's no leaching, no anything, representing failure to the function of the system. Just a mere paper trail of.
But even worse, he's outside of town.
Right, but, but the one-mile buffer, and I'm not sure how that was ever established, but.
Well, there's a deal in state law about the.
The statute says that the city has the right to protect its water sources or any public water supplies within one mile. All the wells are over there. Now Box Elder might be able to come after you with the one, with that statute, but not Rapid City. And I argued before Rapid City, when they passed this thing, it's, look, at least leave the folks east of town away, to let the hell out of the picture. West of town, if you want to jump on them, you know, that shouldn't do that either, but at least leave the people east of town alone.
Anybody in the neighborhood, comparable situation?
It's me. There's another guy that hasn't pumped yet, my neighbor, just a couple neighbors away, but he doesn't even have, he, he's not, he doesn't have an old enough tank to get the exception. He just hasn't done it yet, and.
But the operating permit's still mandatory.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
He's still within the one mile, you know?
So is he pumping or not?
Is he gonna, I, I think, my advice was to him, and maybe it wasn't that great advice, my, my advice was, oh, I think they'll be coming after you, and I said, if you really wanted to wait, if you didn't really want to do it yet, you can wait until you get a summons, and then I think she'll settle with you. If you pump right then, she'll leave you alone, she won't find you. You can wait that long, but I, that's about as far as you can wait. And that, he got, I don't know, now, after that, I told him that Box Elder doesn't have any septic pumping permitting thing going on. And then Georgetown, McKeystone doesn't.
And Hill City doesn't.
New Underwood doesn't, probably Wall probably doesn't. So those cities protect their citizens, they don't even bring in the county rule. I mean, they said, no, we don't do that. So Rapid City is the only city that is doing it, plus the county. And it's, it's not fair, I mean, it's just not fair, because you take away, it'd be nice to see this on a county map colored, you know, the people that don't have to, because anyone that has over 40 acres, or 40 acres or above unplanted, they don't have to do it. And then you take away New Underwood, you take away Wall, you take away Box Elder, Hill City, Keystone, you know, and color that on the map, and then, yeah, I don't know how you, I don't know how to explain it.
It's okay, I'm getting.
But it's not equal, you know?
Well, by the time we're our age, we know that there's nothing fair in this whole world.
I think most, most homeowners just capitulate.
They do, yeah.
You know, I mean.
But, you know.
He's got three acres, it's not, it's not a health issue, in my estimation, in any regard. It's, and, and maybe, George, you could maybe address what you seek from us, more, more pressure on the state to answer our questions, or some, something that we could do, writing from the state that would help your case, or what we, what we can do.
Number 15.
Maybe, maybe it's.
15.
Skip ahead, 15B.
15, yeah. Good time to talk about it, yeah.
I think it's appropriate to do that at this point in time, we've got.
Skip to 15B.
Anyway.
Go ahead. Something else?
No, no, no.
Chuck Gasker drew up a fine petition for us, as we approved in our meeting last month, and we had a, I guess I finally got signature from Jeanette, I remember to catch up to her end of August, and I did not. And I did not get my part of the job done. I wanted to put on letterhead, got Dan, got the letterhead, put cover letters on there. Petition, is a petition in our packet, Dan?
Yes.
So petition outlined the fact that it spoke to, spoke to city Rapid City and the county of Painton County had comparable ordinance pertaining to this same issue. And so the petition was a courtesy copy to both the city and the county, were, were hand-delivered. Affidavits were signed, notarized, et cetera, sent off to Water Management Board. They received their copy September twenty-sixth, signed, certified mail. So I missed the cutoff for the October fourth meeting. Spoke to Eric Rowland.
I just have the letter, not the.
The letter back from Eric Rowland from South Dakota D E N R. And I had a conversation with him on the phone that, uh, this would be at earliest December fifth, sixth meeting. And if there was an objection to it, or opposition to it, it could postpone it to March. So our county commission, absent George Fairby last Tuesday, had this on the agenda. And listen to the footage of this. Assistant State's Attorney Jay Alderman and Deputy State's Attorney or whatever, Melissa, Melissa or whatever, or whatever her name is, I can't think of her name. Michelle Hoffman. Melissa Hoffman, it's a mental exchange, I got that mixed up. Michelle Hoffman got up, spoke towards the fa- in favor of, of an opposition to this, to Department of Natural Research or D E N R. Kind of putting a stiff arm to us like they can stop our action to this petition to the South Dakota Water Management Board. Which really doesn't play in my view because we're a separate body. And the question is, can you give us a decision of what this means? That's all we're looking for. Well, the county commission talked it out like, oh, this is the third time this has come up. What are we dealing with it again for?
What kind of answer?
And it's already been handled type attitude. So all they're trying to press that, hey, this is the third up on this, shouldn't happen anymore. Dan Richer went to the board, got this, you know, they tried to play it off like it's been dismissed a couple of times and decided, done with. Well, that's not the case. It's never been called up and this is the body that would do it. And they're, they've been dodging, including making a decision and saying declaratory ruling. And so right now, we'll probably schedule for December fifth, sixth and, and require to have legal counsel present. Ernie?
Is that, is that something we can go to? I mean, I can go to and, uh, can I have input?
Yes.
Why are they saying that any public person or body has to have a lawyer to go to a public hearing?
It's, uh.
For your own protection.
What protection?
If you don't want it, you don't have to.
To make a decision.
Care to answer any of this or care to have?
That one I don't have an answer for. George asked me, but as I explained to him, as I told you, uh, a corporation cannot represent itself. It has to be represented by counsel. I don't know if that's a state law or a Supreme Court rule, uh, but I know it's considered to be an ethical violation otherwise.
Okay.
That's the only answer I can give you at this point.
What would Dan Richard want?
So knowing that this, this administrative rule cascades across a lot of properties in this, um, situation, it's not just two individuals that are taking on the man or Big G. It's representing a lot of folks. So that's where the, the ballast of this and the importance of this comes down. So there has to be somebody speaking up to it, saying, hey, what's this mean? And they're afraid to answer that question. Can I go to trial or not? Wait it out until trial's over, I guess. I don't know what, what the deal is, but.
They're gonna answer.
It's, uh, so it's postponed to at least December fifth, sixth. Well, the county commission, who voted yes to oppose this, however that means, Eric Rowland set the stage for me and told me, he said, if it's an opposition, it could push it to March. We probably have to spend some money to advertise this, this petition to Water Management Board, six, seven, eight hundred bucks, wherever that costs, to do that, to properly advertise it, that we put the petition forward. It's not in his letter, but I guess I need to find out what that all means and what that entails. Thank you.
Mr. Jasper, do you think this is part of the, uh, the game that gets played, um, by governmental entities, uh, taking people to task and expecting them to have to lay out, resources in order to play the game? And then they, they think that those other entities are going to back down simply because of those resource requirements that they lay out there?
I don't know that I would, uh, concur with calling it a game. But what it comes down to, as I see it, is you have different entities of the state government. One has this view, one has another, but it would appear to me that the board, uh, the, uh, Water Board has already made a determination under their authority, whereas the county, they have enacted an ordinance, and I'm not sure I understand what the source of their authority is. By that, I mean, there is a specific statute that says they can regulate around a wellhead. But this ordinance apparently considers everything in the county part of a wellhead or, or immediately adjacent to. I mean, maybe I'm oversimplified in saying that. But I see it as, we have two different branches of the government and one is ruled and the other says, we have more authority than you. I'm sorry, but you're also established by the government. And therefore, I don't think Painton County Board of Commissioners have power over you either. Does that help you, Nathan?
Yeah, well, let's, let's consider this in reverse. Let's say the, uh, Water Rights Program, the D E N R, wanted to appear before our board. Would it be appropriate for us to demand that they have legal representation for them to come to our board and make a presentation?
I would say they would need legal representation to do so if you're conducting it as a hearing. And what they're, what, what the, uh,
Public hearing.
Water Board is looking at is this is a contested hearing. When in essence, there's no contest. All you're asking for, or all George or Dan Richer asked for before, was a declaratory ruling. That doesn't take a trial, in my opinion. But I guess that's something that's gonna have to be decided by a court, but you can't and I can't. But if you're gonna get it decided, you're gonna have to go through the process.
I might, Mike. I think I told you folks before, but S D C L one twenty-six, uh, fifteen says that, that you and I, all South Americans, have a right to request a ruling, not a judgment. Judgments are for courts, and that's one twenty-six fourteen. Fifteen says that we have a right to ask an agency, and the Water Management Board's an agency, and they're ducking. We need to hold our feet to fire. What the hell is Rapid City and what the hell is Painton County afraid of? Guaranteed, if, if I were on, had the majority of the Rep- uh, Painton County Commission, we'd be asking, we'd be asking for a ruling. Not opposing a ruling. That's why democracies don't work. Painton County doesn't have a democracy. I don't know about Rapid City Council. Democracies don't work because majorities, minority rights aren't protected. That's what our former government's all about, is protecting those minorities. And I'm not talking about red, black, blue. That, I'm talking about minority views. This is crazy. I purposely missed the last meeting because I knew I wouldn't get an equal time. I knew I wouldn't get a, a fair. I got accused and accused and accused for about a half hour of all kinds of things, so I stayed away. I knew that was coming. And I got up and I spoke about this. Well, what the hell is Rapid City and Painton County afraid of? Here's Hill City. Hill City's wells, there probably are, there is some contamination, but here again in Hill City, the water's chlorinated. Keystone, they've got septics. They're not regulated, and you know damn well, they're, they got wells right there close by. They chlorinate their water. That's what Hill Chlorination's for. This is not a safety issue. It's a power issue. And unless we bring these people down that, that usurp power, we're done. Last week, thank God, Saturday, fifty to forty-eight. That's how bad this power thing has gotten in this country. Fifty to forty-eight, I think most all of you watched part of the hearings at least. Talk about accusations beyond belief. And I'm one of few people that I can empathize with, maybe just in a small way. But I've been accused and accused and accused. Facts don't mean anything to those that usurp power.
Mr. Kirby, you just said something, and it's not that big of a deal, but just from, you said democracy doesn't work?
That democracy can't work.
Can't work.
It's mob rule. It's mob rule. Democracy cannot work for very long.
Well, so what, what would you better?
That's, that's why, that's why we have a republic.
Which is what we began with, with republic.
Well, that's what we're.
Yeah, you're right.
Just got twisted and turned.
We're slipping it away, but democracy is mob rule.
So, James?
I understand what you're saying. I do. I understand.
I have two problems with the D E N R letter. One is, aren't they required to advertise for their own hearings and boards? And I don't think it's in our, our bylaws that we're even allowed to advertise for somebody else's meeting. And they, they know this stuff.
They have made up rules, if, if I might.
They can't require us to advertise for a publicized meeting they're gonna hold.
It's a fair comment.
Unless, unless we're gonna hold it in a court of our choice, and they can show up when we tell them that. And if they don't show up, guess what? We may go on rolling.
The legislature gave them the authority to promulgate rules, and they did. And their rule says that, that you have to notice their hearings if, if you're the applicant. The part that they miss, D E N R misses, is that contested case. If that statute that allows you, every one of us to ask for a declaratory ruling, if that turns into a contested case, then it's a right that's totally hollow. Contested case means advertising lawyers, et cetera, et cetera. The legislature then gave us a right that has no meaning. It's hollow. D E N R, Eric Rowland, who is not a lawyer, and, and he, I think he's a civil engineer, and, and he's administrator, and he's just doing what the hell the boss is telling him to do. But there is a ruling that says, yes, you have to advertise it, but that's, that's if it's contested. It can't be contested, otherwise it's a rule or statute that has no meaning.
Petition's filed, so if we have to pay for the hearing notice,
They're coming to record it.
Six, seven, eight hundred bucks. I guess as a proviso, I would like to see, in case that's how the chips fall. And that's how the precedent has been set, Dan Richer, et cetera, whoever has petitioned. There was a petition, I believe, to the board that, on October fourth. I'd have to go back and look it up. It was some kind of petition to the Water Management Board about Mystic Mountain or whatever, not Mystic Mountain, but the, uh.
That was a water permit, and that was contested. Mineral Mountain Resources or whatever, they wanted water, yes.
But wasn't there a petition in that addendum, I think, or is it, was it just?
That's got nothing to do with declaratory ruling.
I understand that. But the petition to this hearing, it's not a hearing, is what you're saying. So you've misphrased this. It's not a hearing.
Well, for, for them to make a declaratory ruling, you're gonna have to have some setting, and you can call that setting hearing, I guess. You gotta call it something, a gathering. You gotta call it something.
So I guess what I, this actually would take place before our December eleventh meeting. So tonight, do we want to assert some funds towards this effort for the advertising, possible legal counsel? As they're dictating in this letter. That's, that's the question I've got posed to the board with regard to this.
Guess we need a motion then, huh?
To see what that may entail, Bob.
So what we're gonna do is basically end up being in a position where you have one state organization, you know, calling out another state organization.
That's not a state.
It's a, we're part of the state. We're part state, they're part state. They're part of the state. And then they have to have, are, do they have authority over the county and the cities? Because we, we're not at the top. I mean, we're at the side.
Agencies only have the power the legislature gives them. Unfortunately, they give them too much power because the legislature, no, no wonder their work. Every agency's got just pages after pages after page of rules, and those rules are like law. So are they over the county or over the city? No. The Supreme Court has said over and over, and you've heard me say this before, cities and counties are creatures of statute. Statute. And only have that powers expressly conferred therefrom, expressly conferred therein, or maybe reasonably implied therefrom. That's, 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 the county and the city are suburb, suburb, subservient to the state legislature.
And we're part of the state.
You're part of the state, and so you're an agency in a way, too.
Yeah.
In a way. So I guess we could ask you for, but you don't have any rules. You don't have any rules that I can ask you to interpret, or, I don't want you to interpret. That you can declare. You don't have any rules.
We don't promulgate rules like the secretaries of these departments are capable of doing.
But it is one agency against another agency within this.
Whereas that stored body is a.
I think it's.
But I didn't say this, but I will, but if, if you're supposed to spend money planting grass out at the airport, you can, you can probably spend a few bucks on this.
It, well, it's a big, it's a big deal.
Ernie?
Well, I have two questions. Is there any, any department in the state legislature that can push these guys to declare a position?
That's what the courts or Office of Hearing Examiner can do that too, right?
Yeah.
There's, there's two agencies, Office of Hearing Examiner, and I don't know who in hell they work for, they work for, but Chuck can know it. I don't know them at all, but, or the courts. And I guess if a rage, I'd say, look, Water Management Board, what tells your authority for declaring this a contested case? If it's a contested case, then that statute's meaningless.
Maybe I'm being naive, but it seems like it's a clear-cut law.
But wait, what?
Why, why do you have to, why do you have to have somebody validate it? If it's on the books, it's on the books.
Because Kinsley Groat, who used to work for Painton County and now works for the city, is on a power trip, and she says that the county first and now the city can be more stringent than the state.
Who's she accountable to?
Nobody, nobody.
Two years ago, she, two years ago, she was pressing, as I was with my wife and these two, at the Water Management Board hearing in October two thousand sixteen, preparing to testify. And we were shut down because it was a surprise witness, surprise testimony. They had to go into executive session, come back out and say nothing. Can't do it. And Kinsley was there and a few other city municipal attorneys were there in cahoots with her.
And even worse, Diane Best from the city of Sioux Falls was there, not only back in October, two years ago, when Mike and Julie approached Cheryl and I, but she was there when Dan Richer's hearing. Sioux Falls is a homeroom, home rule city. And home rule cities can by statute be different than a state agency. In this case, Sioux Falls can do what Rapid City did. Rapid City's not a home rule charter city. But she's up there blapping away. I don't know how she ever got to law school beyond me. Her name is Diane Best, and she's about the worst.
And this is chairman?
And one other gal, or there was three people, four people arguing against us back in October two years ago.
Do we need a motion for this?
This could be a three, four thousand dollar venture if the fees are for notice and, and some legal counsel or whatever. I don't know what we'd run into. Uh, expectation-wise, but. I don't know. We'd have.
Is there a motion?
It's time to me to give you my idea of what will happen if you go have a hearing.
Please do.
I can give you my estimation. Okay. First off, as George pointed out, and as I pointed out too, that, uh, Water Board is calling this a contested matter, even though I don't think it's contested, but the only way we can contest that is to buy, participate in the process. You know, it comes down to. You know, it comes down to we, or I should say you, me speaking on behalf of you in that respect, or asking another agency of the state to do their job. Their job is to interpret their rules. That's what a declaratory judgment or declaratory ruling does. As George pointed out, judges, courts make judgments, agencies make rulings. And all, all that's being asked is, what does your rule here, the specific one, seventy-four...
Fifty-three oh one oh four.
Fifty-three oh four?
Yeah. What, you know, does it mean what it appears to clearly say? And if we take the Supreme Court's words from quite a few cases, you interpret laws with their general meaning unless a specific meaning is assigned by statute. And I'll, and to give you an example, I noticed when this was discussed at the last meeting, someone questioned my choice of the word "several", saying there were several cases that we knew of, and someone indicated, well, I only know of two, therefore several isn't appropriate. But I say no, because if you look at SDCL two dash fourteen, and I think it's two, it defines several as two or more. Okay? So there, several is clearly defined. Okay? So we don't have to resort to the general interpretation. Okay? And so that should apply to agencies making rulings, the same as it applies to courts making judgments and determinations. Okay? So they're saying, since they call it a contested hearing, it has to be advertised, and based on what it costs George Farabee and Dan Richard, I think it cost them in the neighborhood of seven hundred dollars to have it advertised, and I think two or three papers in the state. One in Rapid City, one I think in Aberdeen, and another I think in Sioux Falls. And therefore, that expense of like seven hundred dollars. So assuming you pay that, and they're going to require you to have legal counsel, if I were to be legal counsel, I'll just give you an estimate of what I think would take place. You know, you're gonna look at six hours of travel time roughly, three hours to appear, three hours back. To prepare for this hearing, I'd say, yeah, you're gonna spend two or three hours. I typically tell people I spend two hours out of court for every hour I spend in court, and that's probably an under, underestimation. But I would expect a hearing of this nature to last three hours, maybe more. But what I would expect to do is have several witnesses. Number one, a witness to show what the county ordinance says. Number two, a witness to show what the city ordinance says. I would want at least one of you people here from the board, you know, whether it's your chairman or someone else designated by the board, also as a potential witness. Mr. Farabee would need to be a witness. Mr. Schaub would need to be a witness, and maybe others. Those are the ones I can think of as I stand here. But I believe it was you, Mr. Getty, asked the question, if citizens can attend? Yes, citizens, it's, it's open, it's public. Same as court proceedings are open to the public, except in certain circumstances. Well, a hearing of that nature is open to the public unless there are certain things by statute that say can be excluded from the public. It's like when you send information to some agencies, if you had proprietary information, that proprietary information can be kept separate from what is available to the public, if that explains anything to you. So when Mike said that you could expect this to cost three or four thousand dollars, yeah, I would expect that. You know, as I said the last time, I charge two fifteen an hour for my time. On travel time, I only charge half. And why do I charge half? Well, I'm not all exactly working for you the whole time, but I can't work for anybody else during that time either. And therefore, I think that's a reasonable compensation. Most attorneys don't even give you that break, they charge full-time. There's my approximation of what it would entail. And I guess if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Can we force them to make a ruling that meeting, since it'll be publicized? If we delay it, we force us to republicize it.
Correct. If we publicize this notice of hearing, December fifth, six, they get opposition, I'm not sure what their timeframe is as far as accepting that, but I saw an addendum number two that was signed on September twenty-seventh, and I asked Eric Grauland, said, does that qualify where we get in on October fourth, because you've got a document that was signed a day after you accepted this petition? He said, no, because the notice of hearing has to be done first. So I kind of quelled that question.
I guess I would argue that since they're the ones continuing it, they're the ones that should have the responsibility for republicizing it. That would be my argument. Now, whether I'd win or lose on that one, I can't tell you. Any other questions? Like I said, I'll do my best to answer them. I know George gave you some opinions, and some of his opinions I agree with, but not necessarily everything. But I'm not gonna sit here and tell you everything I know either.
So would you, would you be able to give us a sufficient, not to exceed, number, your comfort level if you were hired to do this represent West Dakota Water Development?
I got bit on that the last time.
I understand.
Yeah.
We got a lot from the...
But that's, that's okay, I speak to my word. You know, to give you a high estimate, yeah, ten thousand dollars, I couldn't expect it to go over that. Up to five thousand, yeah, it could well do that. You know, because I don't know how long it's going to take for this hearing. Because I expect, as Mike, you witnessed, when we were at George's hearing last year, you had someone from Pennington County, I think it was Kinsley Groat, you had someone from the city of Rapid City, you had the South Dakota Municipal League. I don't remember if the county commissioners were represented or not, and you had Diane Best...
Two tables, about seven or eight of them lined up.
Yeah. Yeah, there were that many attorneys, and they all got an opportunity to talk. And if you're gonna have a hearing, every attorney that claims an interest in it is gonna have an opportunity to cross-examine the witnesses as well. So I said three hours, it may go all day, I, I don't, I can't say. It's, it's, that's the kind of thing that's hard to predict.
I understand.
I'm relatively new at our, at our funding. Do we, do we reasonably expect to grant a certain figure, and then if that amount is, if the costs are greater, we're not obligated to that, and if the costs are less, we expect to be returned the money, the minimum? Say it only costs, we grant five and eight?
About to exceed five fifty last time to get this petition constructed. Which, he's not submitted a bill yet, but he said he would be.
Well, I...
He had a lot more hours than two and a half.
I estimated two hours, but it's closer to three and a half.
On the petition.
So.
We've already invested that much.
Go ahead, Nathan, I'm sorry, I was looking for this budget.
Mr. Jasper, would you be willing to do a five thousand dollar cap, do you think?
You're putting me on the spot.
I am.
I, I would go seven fifty, seventy-five hundred as a cap. I'm not shooting from the hip.
Ken?
And you know, this is, this procedure we're going through is for the community and everybody in the whole county. Because they're dealing everybody. And sooner or later, they're gonna get it beat, because I'm gonna refuse to pay it.
Yeah, at this point, you have two goats.
That's right.
Maybe they don't appreciate being called that, but I call them as I see them. You know, they're the scapegoats.
That's it, yeah.
I think there should be a point made here that, you know, George and Carol Farabee have taken so much grief for the road that they've taken in fighting this issue. And I think it's sad, because it, to me, it's an indicator of... To me, it's an indicator of how our society has changed. Because I, I think the issue that George is championing here is something that the ACLU would have done a generation ago. Protecting our civil liberties, that's the issue driving George and Carol Farabee. And people today look at him with disdain, the paper does. And it's sad, to me, it's sad. That is, that is not the country that, that I want. I want people like George and Carol Farabee out there championing our civil liberties. And I think that's what's driving this issue. It's kind of a bigger issue than our board, but I would like to support it as best we can.
There are four items in the requested action. A, is a, issue a declaratory ruling on whether or not ARSD seventy-four fifty-three oh one oh four means what it appears to plainly state. B, whether or not ARSD seventy-four fifty-three oh one oh four applies to other units of South Dakota government, specifically counties and cities. C, specifically whether or not Pennington County may ordinance, made by ordinance effectively nullified February twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-five date by regulating on onsite wastewater systems that have not changed, have not been shown to cause groundwater to be polluted, or that have not allowed wastewater to surface. And the same statement, specifically whether or not Rapid City may by ordinance effectively nullify, same statement. So that's the requested action. Is it, what's mean?
I have a dumb question for George and everybody else. Has anybody challenged this in the courts against Rapid City and Pennington County and said, hey, we wanna sue this as an illegal ordinance?
Sadly, our system is so broke, so broke, that city, county can pass an ordinance, and the only way you can go to the court is if you're aggrieved. You have to be aggrieved before you can go to the court. So no matter how bad that ordinance is, and I pointed it out in two thousand eight, and two thousand nine, and two thousand ten, let's, let's get the court to rule on this de facto thing. You can't get there without being aggrieved. So Busker, the wise ass, and I'll, pardon me for swearing, but he's a wise ass, he said, well, we'll send you a notice. I was exempt. I stood in their way for a year and a half. That lady back there, and myself, and a few others stood in their way for a year and a half. And they finally said, well, we exempt forty acres. That got the ranchers, you know, ranchers can be a little bit, and tankers. I thought about the guy, Deacon Towne, not Weston Towne. Anyway, so to get it passed, there were two guys on the committee, they wouldn't put me on the committee, of course. No way in hell would they put me on it, but they got two ranchers from a wall. And they resisted, and resisted, they helped me. Soon as they said forty acres, these guys folded. Let's test this ordinance before it's applied. No, it's gotta be applied, and somebody has to suffer first. That's what aggrieved means. So four years after they passed it, then when we get old George, they changed the forty acres from land to lot. And then the word "lot" is the definition of the parcel of land. So now I'm aggrieved. Now, and I'll wind up, I'll be in the Supreme Court. Had the two trials, magistrate, that old fart, I'm gonna swear, I'm sorry. Read him his speech. He sat there and slept to the trial guilty. So I appealed to Circuit Court. Some retired guy from, from the Fourth Circuit. Trial was in June, two days. Imagine, two-day trial. Kinsley got up and lied, Brittany got up and lied, the Penning director got up and lied. The judge hasn't ruled yet, because he knows they're lying. Absolute outright lies. June, here it is, October. The judge probably won't rule until January, February, March. And then, I'm guessing that the establishment will say, Judge, you gotta find Farabee guilty. We can't let him win. Think what the hell that would do to all of us in the establishment. So then I'll appeal to Supreme Court. My number one issue, and Chuck probably kind of disagrees, but it's de facto. You can't do stuff retroactively. Especially if there's no public safety issue. How in the hell unsafe can I be? How in the hell unsafe can that guy back there be? And here's Hill City with septic's on Spring Creek, and Keystone, and septic's on, on Battle Creek, right by the water supplies. It's not a safety issue, it's a power issue. Somebody asked about Kinsley Groat, she doesn't have a boss. Where in the hell did Ricky go?
He just left.
She doesn't have a boss. Just is what tells she wants to do.
Ernie?
George?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody in this room knows where George and Carol Farabee live. I don't know if anybody in this room has ever seen their property. If you have, like I have for twenty years delivering to him, he owns a significant piece of property. There's no way that any septic tank for two people can ever cause a problem on his property. Now, he could probably pull some fence lines and say, you know, this is, this is, this area, and when they changed it to lot, they got it. Now, he's got a huge lot, hundreds of acres. And, and it shouldn't, it shouldn't even be an issue with George, and George is taking the stand. You think this guy over here's got a prayer? Somebody's gotta do something.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we ask
Be in discussion.
Chuck Jasper to represent us before the board with the maximum cost of seventy-five hundred dollars to address that, the, the variety of issues before the board, the Water Management Board.
Second, okay, motion second, hold the discussion, continue.
Okay. This, this, I feel really sympathetic towards this, this is...
Nathan White. Motion second, I'm sorry. Dan was asking something.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
This has been something that's been on my mind for a while, since the beginning, and I, I'm feeling really bad for, and, and Mr. Farabee. What they've gone through is a lot. And I'm, I'm really in their court, but then I'm looking at what we're supposed to do, our purpose as a Water Board. And this is not one of our, this is not the purpose of what we're here for. This is not, this is not in our bylaws that, that we finance legal aid to citizens. We're... It, it's a, it's a hard decision, because I want these guys, they have a good point. And I'm under, but this is not what we do here at this board. And, and I'm thinking, do you wanna stick, do you wanna break? Our, our purpose? I, I, I'm really concerned about us not doing what we're supposed to do, but by, on the same way, I'm kind of waffling back and forth, because I feel bad for these guys. I wouldn't want to go through what you guys have done, have gone through.
James and Nathan?
I got two big issues with this in favor of George. The first issue is, the city and county rammed this ordinance down our throat, saying, we're cleaning up the water because all you leach fields are destroying it. When our study finds out that, oh, by the way, we forgot to tell you, the septic plant on, that the city owns dumps Rossa, which untreated in the winter time all winter.
So, but do you understand what I'm saying? I, I'm not saying that they don't have good grounds. I'm just saying, is that what we do? Is that, is that what we do at West Dakota Water Development as a board? Is this what we do? It's not in our bylaws that we do anything like, like this.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to that?
Well, I got, I got one other thing real fast.
Can we keep to our, to our purpose, or do we, or, or do we...
You restated that, so, James and Nathan continue.
The second thing is, the proposed hearing date would be...
December fifth. December fifth, sixth.
December fifth and sixth, so two days, possibly...
Depending what else is on their agenda.
And one of us would most need to go, so we'd also have to have...
I would plan on being there.
A hotel, a hotel night, probably.
Is this a good use of tax dollars money, maybe?
Yes.
So is that, is that all you had, James?
Yeah.
Nathan and Ernie?
I'd like to respond to, Director Gurlou. Yes, this is something that we should do. We are all elected officials, we answer to our constituents. This issue has a nexus directly associated with water.
But do you understand what by, bylaws are, and what we stand for here, and what we're supposed to do here, and what, what our job is here, as opposed to...
I see my job as representing my constituents.
Is your job differently than the rest of ours? Is, is your job different than, than the rest of the water department? Do you not have to go by this?
I'd like him to complete his answer.
I wasn't finished, that was, I have, that was all one question. Do you feel that, that, that you don't necess, necessarily have to follow our purpose being on the water board? Does that not take priority?
I guess my response to that would be, can you tell me the bylaw that this would be violating?
Well, our purpose is right there, if you wanna read it, and it doesn't say that we do this, and, and it's not that I disagree with them.
Are we elected officials from our constituents?
And you understand, it's not that I disagree with them, 'cause, but it's a lot of taxpayers' money for, for two people. I, I'm struggling with it. I'm struggling with, with it, because it's a, four to five thousand dollars is a lot of money, up to seven maybe is a lot of money for just two people.
That's, that's the mis...
But yeah.
Excuse me, that's the misnomer that you're taking with this, Jeanette, is it's not just two people, it's the entire county west of Fane River. Hundred thousand, a hundred thousand people minus those that don't have septic, obviously, or whatever the case may be, so say it's thirty or forty thousand, or fifty thousand, whatever that could count like, end up being. So, you've got folks, more than two, that are represented, as Nathan was trying to point out.
They're sending out notices to people that don't even have septic's.
Is, is that, is our chairman unbiased then?
Unbiased? I told you two years ago, I was gonna testify on behalf of this, as, as a person, as a party agreed, and they didn't let me testify at the Water Management Board. So I'm not unbiased in that respect, and I have a vote for my constituents, so I think everybody in the room has bias at some point in time. Dan?
Maybe this, my question will help, but I'm, I'm just trying to understand, what's stopping the water board from just simply changing their rule so that, as a solution, rather than going all through this declaratory ruling stuff?
Call on Chuck first here.
To answer that, in order to do so, they have to propose the rule change, and then it has to be subject to public hearings. And anybody in the state would be able to go to those public hearings to contest the rule changes. Does that answer your question?
So it'd be a difficult thing for them to do, is your answer?
Can't be done tonight.
Well, it can't be done in a very short period of time. And while, and while it's, the question is before them, I don't think it would be appropriate for them to try and change the rule.
Okay, fair enough.
Dan?
Motion on the floor is for seventy-five hundred dollars.
Right.
Takes two votes, correct?
It would.
We're not gonna be able to have two votes before December second.
It's a contingency fund.
Only expenditure over five thousand is...
Five thousand dollars is, is the limit.
Ernie?
Can I still ask a question for the attorney? And I hate to, no, it's important. You read a list of things that might be litigated there?
This is the request, this is the, yeah, not a petition.
Do you think that seventy-five hundred dollars would, would give you enough time to address those issues, or all those issues, the issue?
It's in the petition, yes. I wrote the petition, so...
James?
You know, I've been quiet about this, and I, I spoke up, out of turn, and just so everyone's aware, I have a warehouse on Sturgis Road that has no running water and no sewer, and the city sent me a Nasi Graham notice to inspect my sewer. I said, "What sewer?" They go, "Don't you have a septic tank?" I said, "No." "Do you have any history of me having a septic tank?" "Well, no, you have a building." I said, "You've gotta be kidding me." They said, "How'd you even get my name, then?" "Oh, we just went through the county records, anybody has a building that's not on a city I said, "Well, if I got a garage out there, you're gonna send me a..."
"Well, yeah."
I don't think that's relevant.
But that's how loosey-goosey they're playing with the rules here. I don't even have a septic system, and they sent me a notice to pump mine.
Kent and then Ernie.
You know, when this first started coming down the tubes, they had a doctor, out off of this board, that helped them get this ordinance through. And he lied through his teeth when he did that, for them. Okay, it cost me approximately four thousand dollars to try to get a little bit of reverse going here. I helped George, I helped four or five other people. I was all turned down for it. A year after they got the ruling in position, I got phone calls you wouldn't believe. How do we get this reversed? How do we not have to pay these bills? Because they was charging people up to three and four thousand dollars to inspect their septic system, declaring it no good, and making them dig it up, and could not prove a one of them. In fact, I got two names that you'll be interested in, that they made them redo their whole septic ten, septic system, and they have no proof whatsoever it was bad. The only thing I can tell them, sorry, you were sitting on your hands when you asked it first time.
The reason I joined this board, or petition to join it, was because I'd lived in Rapid Valley for forty years, and I've dealt with septic system and well issues. When Atlas hit, it, it put so much moisture in that ground out there for miles around. When that melted for a year and a half later, it overwhelmed septic systems on Longview I dealt with Brittany Malator down, down at the courthouse, and, and in all honesty, she worked with us very well, probably a dozen. And it was getting to the point where I would call Dave Wiggy out there, and he would pump my septic tank, and he'd fill up his truck and leave, and come back and fill it up, and he could not empty that, my septic tank, because it was being flooded from groundwater from an irrigation to Hawthorne Irrigation Ditch up in a field above us. So, I was at the mercy of an irrigation ditch and a big storm water table, and we were this close to having to spend the twenty thousand dollars for a, for a mound system. And all my neighbors were in that. And that really opened my eyes. How do I fight that? That was, you know, when I put that in, that was through no fault of my own that all that failed. Well, I think it may not spell it out as yet, as in our, in our, in our bylaws, and, and that is important. But I think our mission here is water quality, and I think septic issues and water qualities are, you can't separate them, one leads to the other. And I think for the greater good of us in our district, that we're representing, that we stand to develop a great number of people with their water quality through getting a, a verification of existing law, that's all we're asking for here. And I, I think that's gonna make a big difference in many people's lives and in their pocketbooks. So I, I think it's a worthy expenditure.
Depends up, I think you're raising your hand, but...
Yeah, sorry. Uh, so here, here's my thoughts on this. So I did some quick numbers, we did the nine hours of him being there, three in the meeting, six out of the meeting, and two fif, fifty, two fifteen, excuse me, that puts it at about twenty-six hundred eighty, seven hundred dollars lowballing for the item of the notice, that puts us at about thirty-three eighty as that. Now, you said, and I'll, I'll, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Jasper, that if anybody shows up to contest it, it will possibly go to March, which will be another thirty-three hundred minimum, and I'm probably lowballing this quite heavily, so we can assume, you said about between five to ten thousand dollars, so we're looking at ten thousand to twenty thousand dollars. We just got done with a budget hearing saying, "We have too much money," but yet, we're gonna spend twenty thousand dollars on this item. We just got done with nine and ten saying, "That's too much money, we don't have enough money," but yet, we're throwing up to twenty thousand dollars hypothetically. Optimistically, it would be under that seventy-five hundred, which Mr. Gabor said, but I'm just seeing this being a money pit, that we're gonna throw money at it, money at it, and it's not gonna solve Mr. Farabee's issue, Mr. Schaub's issue, any of the other issues that people in Pennington County have with septic tanks. And I agree with Jeanette, this really does not fill the absolute purpose as legal aid. Now, if we could write a letter of support to somebody actually doing legal, I'd be okay with that, but not footing the bill for the legal defense.
I would agree with that.
So...
Because they, they do it, I feel bad for them, and I would like to do something for them, but we don't have that in the budget.
And it's not legal defense, 'cause this is not a, sort of court, I believe, Supreme Court, for a ruling that...
I guess you could rule it anyway. You could say rule it if you wanted to. But it's so funny.
Financial assistance for water projects is on the screen, is the vote for five thousand, regarding projects. I'm gonna back up to March, when we hired Dan. And forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, that was a one-vote issue that night, when we hired him, because H2 wanted a soft out, and we interviewed three companies slash individuals that night, and chose Dan for forty-seven thousand five hundred on one vote.
Probably shouldn't be.
Not a project. That's what I'm getting to. But it talks about projects over five thousand, so this is not a project, hiring Dan is a administrative function, was not a project, so I'm not sure it's spelled out...
Legal assistance.
...to require a two-vote for something other than a project.
But shouldn't we be taking bids, then, for legal assistance?
Yes.
Because that's what we did with Dan, there were two other candidates in the vote, so if we're going for, as it says, administrative task, shouldn't we open it up for bids? And I know Mr. Jasper's probably the best one in the situation, but we still need to open it up for bids, if that's what we're calling this.
I've not recruited lawyers to hire one, thankfully, but we did not, we did not recruit, or we did not receive bids last time we made the choice. Sarah Frankenstein, it was in your package, so...
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, we, we did vote on a attorney to represent us, and, and so she, and she just, and, and she just goes by as we meet her, she's not a retainer. And, and although we voted on her, we have not called on her, we go with Mr. Jasper instead, and I don't understand that either, but he's a good attorney, just that we voted for somebody else to represent us, but after we voted for her, we decided not to use her. It gets real complicated sometimes.
Nathan and then Kent, please.
We've been calling this legal assistance, and I guess I don't look at it that way. We're simply satisfying some requirement of this board for us to make a presentation before the board. From my perspective, that is not a legal assistance, that's simply going to the board, state agency to state agency, satisfying whatever requirement they have stipulated for us, for us to make the presentation.
We are leaning against an assumption that they're gonna turn us down, they're gonna run us into a lawyer. The reason that Mr. Jasper was hired last time, he has more knowledge of what's going on...
Oh, I don't.
...from word one all the way up, so he would not have to do the research in charge of that.
But that's not the point, Mr. Moss, the point is, I have no objection to Mr. Jasper, I, I would call on him myself if I needed an attorney. My, my point is, we voted, and we voted for, not only for Mr. Moley, but we also voted for an attorney to represent us, and after we voted, all those votes are canceled out when, when we call on another attorney. You understand what I'm saying? If, if we voted for one person to be our official attorney for the West Dakota Water Development, we voted, it passed, and it's in the minutes, but yet, when we finally need one, and we haven't needed one really until just now, we decided that, no, we won't go according to those votes, we'll go in another direction, 'cause my friend is Mr. Jasper. That's not anything on him.
It's not the friend.
Oh, well, he could be my friend, I mean, I think of him as a friend.
It's knowledge and content of material, and Sarah Frankenstein would have been fifteen hundred bucks minimum, or two thousand dollars, 'cause she'd had to study.
Well, did, well, did you have a bid, even?
There was no after.
I guess it was just that we voted, I guess it's the whole point, I guess the whole point is, we voted for one person, and then we went against our own vote. And it's nothing personal about even one of them, it was that we went against our own vote.
Well, that's, that's history. In a board voter majority fashion, to do what they did, we did, so...
Well, it is what it is, and I really don't object to Mr. Jasper. I just object to going against our own vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call a vote.
Yeah, let's call a vote.
Call a vote. For seventy-five hundred dollar maximum to hire Chuck Jasper to represent West Dakota Water Management Board, at the water, West Dakota Water Development District Board, at the Water Management Board meeting December fifth and sixth, fifth and over sixth. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we'll roll call. Gurlou?
No.
Byalada?
Aye.
Mack?
Nay.
Williams?
Aye.
Geddes?
Aye.
Jovick?
Aye.
Yurki?
Nay.
Moss?
Aye.
And motion carries. Okay. I guess Chairman rules, this is a single vote, it's not a project, so...
Five to three.
Has to proceed. Maybe an aye for the record, if you wanna count me.
I don't want to. Chairman votes when there's a tie.
I vote every time. Okay, agenda item, back to agenda item. Thirteen. I'm on, I've been on the record every time again, so Dan found this little gem in our policy and procedures, and we need to do a formal evaluation of him, although it's not been a full year prior to the December, prior to the, before the December meeting. And he submitted some questions that came from East Dakota, Jake Gilbertson, that are used. Intent tonight is to assign a committee to perform this task with regard to, with input from any board member who'd like to submit to, input. Trying to get down to it here, here we go. It's in blue. Are you there already?
Yeah, yeah, I was...
Okay, you're, you're finding...
Looking for that.
...the policy itself.
Yeah, so the policy is twenty-eight here, I just put that in there, so it basically says, the Decem, I, I don't know exactly where it is in here, the December meeting is when the results will be tallied, and a committee then will be appointed to come up with... to come up with the procedure or the mechanism for evaluating you.
We've done this in the past.
The only, yeah, and I, I asked Emily, and she said it was never done, to her knowledge. I looked through minutes in the past, and I saw in twenty fifteen, I saw a reference to it in this, in actually January, January of one of the meetings, but there were no details. So the policy basically gives these enumerated categories here, but they don't, really don't say, um, what to apply them to. So that's, I asked Jay Gilbertson, yeah, he's the manager at East Dakota Water Development. He said, yeah, we do that. Here's, here's our, um, our form essentially. So I just pasted that in in blue. Some of these may not apply. They're a big operation out there. They have six people, and they do more with looking for grants and stuff, and that's one of the things in here. But I thought maybe this might save the committee some time if they wanted to just cherry pick whatever they feel is appropriate out here.
Had a chance to process this, think about it, look at it. I want the three volunteers.
Yeah, here it is. So the evaluation will be performed by the board or designated committee of the board annually in December. So that would be the next meeting.
When did you start working, maybe, and I can't remember?
April.
He snuck in in late March to get a transition, but April one officially. So he's got six, seven months under the bill.
So, yeah, you're right, it hasn't been a year, so I don't know if that's a technicality to not do this or not.
My, my thought is wait till he's been here, worked here for a year, and then do it, maybe next year. Whatever, whatever you wanna do.
Renewal time is coming on, you know, for, in April one again, we'd have to evaluate the...
Before the renewal. I just wanna hire him again and then evaluate him.
It could be done later, um, but policy's gotta change then for, that was not followed.
Well, it just happens to be, uh, for the timeframe that he was actually in a position. You know, and that's taken into accordance. It's kind of a learning curve for him, stepping into that position.
I suppose you could vote on a policy change next meeting or right now.
You'd have to advertise for a policy change.
Policy change gotta be posted for thirty days, so we need our website. So we'd have, as early as December, we could change policy if we wish.
We could technically do this evaluation as a probationary period for his first six months as more of a reference of how we feel he's currently doing the job and anything that he can improve on for the next half. So therefore, we're still doing our annual evaluation, but it's with the understanding that, hey, Dan, this is where we think you're at. Just so you know, where you could possibly work better. I've had evaluations similar to that in some of my careers, so...
Some passes are ninety days, sixty...
Like I said, the, the evaluation can be as simple or as detailed as you want. It just says...
If it worked for East Dakota, I don't know why it wouldn't work for us, the way it's laying here in front of us. I, I don't know why we'd have to...
Reinvent something.
...fire down and try and invent something else myself.
Yeah, I think this is, I mean, this is pretty thorough.
We've got like a staff of several people that are full-time, so... I think an interim, interim evaluation of six months plus is, is very suitable for amount of time we've known each other, so to speak. So I'm not afraid to do this by December, if there's a committee of three. But we stick with the policy the way it is, not to change that schedule, but... Other input?
All right.
So what...
Um, we don't just need a committee of three. We could each be given the responsibility of circulating the number that applies and just pass it back to...
Do we pass it back, Dan?
For compilation.
I might be biased.
Could be a high trust level there.
I, I wouldn't recommend that.
I think we oughta, we should go ahead and do it, uh, all of us. Figure out, send it back to the chairman for compilation. And because, you know, you're gonna have two or three answers on the same question. Uh, just figure it out from there, and you're not gonna use all the questions. You'd be tied up for a year and a half.
There is a zero here for non-applicable.
Yeah.
Which, I fit that category. Insufficient knowledge. Go ahead, Jeanette.
Um, I guess I'm not following you. You wanna make a policy change?
No.
You wanna, you wanna change something?
No, I'm, I'm okay with leaving it as December. And if the whole board would like input, I was thinking if we needed a committee, put this together with input from anybody that'd like to have input. We can all score this and then submit it back, compile it, and have a result with the sheet East Dakota uses.
And we would change our policies.
We would not change our policy. We're, we just don't have...
I'm just confused on this part.
East Dakota does this form. They use these criteria.
Oh, oh, okay.
With a scoring system. And so we could use the same.
Oh, okay. I, I, okay, I get it now.
No policy change. Sorry if I ran around circles there.
No, that was good. Sometimes it takes a little bit. Need a motion or anything?
Well, this is a, uh, document, I suppose, it was easier to scribble on it.
I'll say we leave the agenda item as it is, and we're, your point. Do you have a couple volunteers or voluntles?
I was seeing a committee of about two or three folks, and everybody can have input to this as far as the scoring. And that committee can compile that and write a report for the meeting in December.
Email us the questions?
Pardon?
Email us the questions?
They're in the agenda packet.
So it's just a matter of scoring that and sending it off to the committee.
Okay.
Compilation and assembly.
I, I could put it in a more easy-to-fill-in form if you want, and send that out. So it's fair. Would you like me to do that?
That would, that would, if I was struggling on how to make this thing happen, so... I've dabbled around long enough that you offered. Thanks, Dan, for that offer. Creating your volunteer. So if we email that out to the board, um, in a week or two, I'm impressed to say when, but in a week or so, week two.
Just keep in mind, when you're filling this out, the person you're evaluating helped you all out by creating...
If it doesn't look just like this, if the content changes, I mean, it's...
It's gonna be all fives. Just fives.
Just, just don't put anything below five on it.
Don't make your treasurer do his job.
It's an administrative function. It's, it's just merely a form. He might be, this might be passed on to the ensuing successor of Dan's position someday, so...
Mr. Chairman, then you still want us all to fill it out, but you're gonna have a committee of three?
I think everybody has equal opportunity to have input to it.
It's like a media nine to me.
Yeah.
Throw that bomb out.
I was just asking, 'cause you, that came up, something about a committee of three.
That's true.
Yeah, it's ready to have some cut, because there are people in East Dakota.
Where, where do we send them?
Do we send them to you or the secretary or the treasurer?
The secretary.
Okay.
She's unbiased, but it's not easy. It's not easy to be unbiased. Especially when you always...
Especially when you're always right.
No, I was just saying, especially when I always have an opinion, is what I was gonna say. And I thought I was gonna not incriminate myself here.
Can you restate what we're gonna do? I think that, I would like, do we have to have a motion to do that?
I can appoint a committee. I'd ask for board's input.
Yeah, I'm just reading.
Can I read what I have?
Pardon me?
Do you, can I read what I have?
I'm not sure if it's gonna fit. Go ahead.
I just put, I just put for number thirteen that Donna, Dan has offered to email form. And I didn't name the form, 'cause I wasn't sure what it was called.
Evaluation form.
Evaluation.
Annual performance evaluation form.
And that's all I put in there.
Okay. That's in the minutes so far, so that's accurate. Would everybody like to have input to this?
Yeah.
That's the question in front of us.
Send the form to the whole board. Let them fill their part out and send it there.
We may not need a committee. If everybody'd like to have input, you're welcome. I'm gonna assign a committee of three, but it'd be better spread if everybody had input.
I have some input. Do we all get paid for being on that committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, as your, as your meeting day.
You get paid a thank you. Okay, might be handwritten, thank you.
If you're real smooth, you might get a bottle of honey.
I gotta handle that.
Maybe I should include where they send it to, the evaluation.
If you're receiving those, the secretary can file.
Okay, you want me to do it really? I was just...
You volunteer.
Okay, go do it.
Said you may do that, I...
Okay, I can do that. It's not gonna be hard.
When we, uh, we had the committee for selection for this position, I'm just gonna sidebar, a little bit comparable with this. We gave a ranking scoring, and then we ended up finding the three we want to interview that way. And, uh, we had, I don't know, maybe not the same field, but something comparable. Come down to a weighted sheet possibly. Ernie?
Full disclosure, Dan, it's my name. And I, and I don't have any problem being on the committee. I just want, wanna let you know.
Sure. Thank you. Nathan?
Should we have a, uh, date by which these should be...
Oh, yeah.
Completed and sent to...
That we do, and I was trying to find out if Dan is creating this or offered to create this under administrative time. If two weeks is a reasonable amount of time to have it ready to be sent out to everyone.
I could probably do it in about a week. I gotta get, once I get through this meeting, done with the minutes.
Your immediate tasks are in front of this.
This has to be posted to the, um, website within a week and all that stuff.
So I'm seeing October, it's nine, fourteen, twenty-third, twenty-third October, we see it.
We just need this done by December, right?
It'll be done by December, so...
So it could be fifteen November or something like that.
Completed by mid-November would be sufficient.
November what?
Compilation, but then we're running into holiday on twenty-second, so let's maybe cut that off to November eight.
When does the executive board meet? Just thought it was your...
Response time. Generally, the executive board meets second Tuesday or so, if we're the managers. Sometime in that second week of the off month, second week of November.
Maybe if they can make them all guess, no answers, no problem.
Yeah, so at least sometime in November.
So email them to the secretary, November twenty-third, and, uh, completed by November eight.
Sounds great.
So, so, all right.
I think November eight gives us a couple weeks to get through it.
Okay.
Make sure you have the secretary's email address on the form.
That's a good idea.
Make sure you have the secretary's email address on the form, who to send it to. Okay.
Jeanette's email.
Right. I send emails all the time, but...
No, no, put, put Jeanette's email on the form you're gonna create, so we can send it to her.
Okay.
Not back to you. Okay. Correct. Right.
I'm getting ready to change that, but every time I go to change it, it turns up.
I believe you, me too.
Careful. Have we hammered that out, or you...
I gotta change it. I'm not gonna do it. I'm already retired. I don't need that.
Anybody have any questions on the process?
No.
Okay.
I'm not gonna retire fully. I don't believe in...
Okay, we gotta keep rolling here.
Number fourteen?
This is something Dan brought up to us at executive meeting. It's considered press release upon things that we've accomplished or will be completing or have completed. So there are some standard formats out there for public agencies to do that, I'm sure. And I think Toni Broom said she'd get you a list of contacts tonight from Rapsody Regional Airport. So it's just a matter of having that list. And if, if there's a quick, easy press release to get our word out of things we're accomplishing or doing, approving or something, that's the intent of this item, so...
So I, I was thinking I could write something up and then email it to everybody. However we decide to do it, if everybody approves, if that's a decision, go ahead and do it. They get it's, I, I don't wanna make it too drawn out, though. Or if you have like a press release committee or something, that to simplify things. But I, I don't wanna misrepresent anything unintentionally.
Well, I think if it's emailed to the group in, in whatever days that are needed to get it processed or, or feedback to any possible errors that may be a bit witnessed or whatever. I don't know why, in a few days, you'd have it ready.
Yeah, as soon as I get them all in, it doesn't take long.
We're talking press release.
Well, a, a press release usually...
Item fourteen.
Okay, a press release, you just, what we used to do when I, when I was working for the newspaper was we just had a form, to, from, and then blank what you wanna say. And then we just filled it out that way every time we had a press release.
Okay. I talked, I talked to Toni Broom, and she said she just has an email list, and I, I'm gonna talk to her again. And she would give me that list. So I, I don't think it's that complicated a process.
No, it, it's really easy.
Want to do what's...
Rather than print it, or not, it's the complicated part.
So if you need a motion, I'm... I don't know, any kind of motion, it's just gonna be a function of administrative activity. And, uh, you'll be party to witnessing or seeing, editing, whatever the place may be of what's going out before it goes out.
Send a copy.
Catch a snagging. Put notes to it. So item fifteen A, um, we've talked a little bit around this attorney business tonight. I'd like to reconsider changing our assigned attorney, so...
Well, that's a good one. That's what I'm gonna have for you guys to do.
It may be obvious that, uh, maybe this should have preceded item fifteen B, because it isn't on order. But, uh, anyway, I'd like to offer up Chuck Jasper to, to take that role. And, uh, knowing this is raised to one hundred and fifteen an hour, I'm not sure we could compete with that on the street, but that's what I'd like to offer up as a suggestion.
But you can't make that motion, can you?
It's a suggestion.
So moved.
Well, wait a minute, can I make the motion then?
She was quicker.
Well, who, who made the motion? Okay, who made the motion?
So moved, Nathan.
You second the motion?
He made the motion, so moved, he said.
Okay, repeat it to me, so I get it right.
Chuck Jasper will be our new attorney.
Okay. Easy, easy, easy.
That's the motion.
As what?
That is the motion.
Do I have second? Do you have a second?
I have second. Okay, now I have a second. I might have missed the second before, because there was a little clarification going on here.
Okay.
Any discussion on that motion, Kent?
Since the man is present, I'd like to know what his retainer fee is gonna be.
Well, my dad used to say you can tell how a carpenter is paid by the way he hammers. By the hour, by the hour, by the hour. Contract, contract, contract. I charge by the hour. Does that answer your question?
Of being used, okay. Just as long as you don't feel like you're being used.
And, and what's your, what's your rate per hour?
Two fifty.
Two hundred and fifteen. How are you situated for reimbursables?
Nathan made it. Expenses.
Expenses?
Yeah.
Plus expenses?
Yeah. No sales tax, you're a government entity.
Oh, okay.
That should make you feel good, right? That is better.
I think so.
It sounded pretty good if you don't flake on it.
Dan?
I, I think if we're gonna hire an attorney, that we should, uh, interview attorneys, get proposals from attorneys that can, to serve by purpose, rather than just selecting somebody. Well, we did that, Dan, and, and we, but we didn't follow the attorney that we, that we voted on. I mean, we... That's my point, is I think, I think we oughta bring in more and more attorney and interview them.
That's my point, is I think, I think we oughta bring in more and more attorneys and interview them, just like we do anything else, just like we do-
That would be the right way to do, but they don't do it that way here.
Nathan?
I think, uh, Mr. Jasper is uniquely qualified to be our attorney. He used to sit on the board, he attends many of our meetings, he's familiar with our issues. I think, uh, combination of, uh, all of that makes him uniquely qualified to be our attorney.
James?
I hire a lot of legal counsel, and I'm a bargain hunter of the worst sort. I do not know of any attorneys for two hundred and fifty an hour or less, not a single one.
Great, good.
Well, there are, there are attorneys in Benton County that, that are very familiar with water issues, and, and I know at least two of them, and besides Mr. Jasper, and, and that probably would be interested in, in serving us.
Nathan?
There are other people that are just as qualified, in my opinion.
Again, I would respond, uh, Mr. Jasper is uniquely qualified, he used to sit on this very board, he attends our meetings on a regular basis. He's familiar with the issues that we deal with, that we have dealt with, with our history, that makes him uniquely qualified to be our attorney.
Comment I could make is, tonight, we could say yes or no to this, and in December, we could say yes or no to somebody else. I mean, it could be another opportunity. We don't like him, send him down the road, let's find another, so there, every meeting, have an opportunity to do something of this nature, so, um, I'm not gonna get in the mud, but I know of a, a factual situation, previously assigned attorney, that I'm not saying I'd be proud of being affiliated, so I'm just gonna stop there.
I'm not saying anything wrong.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that just because that's, that's why I'm gonna stop, because there's, there's bad behavior that I heard about that also tilts my away, so, so what you're offering, Dan, is, is not, you know, unwelcome, because I think a lot of probably good attorneys out there for water issues.
Well, we, I, you know, we just went through a process to hire Mr. Mullally, and, uh, and I thought it was fair, you know, a good process, a good procedural process, we had a committee, and I had to, and interview, uh, you, and we had several proposals, and I don't see why you wouldn't do that for, for legal counsel.
Do we do it?
Because there's, there are other people that are very qualified, especially on the waterside, that are in Benton County, that I've worked with in the past, that probably would, might be interested in working for us, so.
Well, if it looks like they're competitive and, and would like to be a part of the, uh, opportunity, um, send Dan a resume and see if, if they're interested, but if we're switching tonight, which I think is the intent here.
Why do we need to switch him, I don't-
He's already contracted to do the work with previous votes, so there's really no rush, are we gonna need him between now and December? So that we can possibly actually have an actual discussion, maybe not at ten thirty at night?
If there's a black eye on our other legal counsel that represents us, that doesn't go well for us.
But we just said we never use the legal counsel.
I, I, we have, we have a duty to-
So what, what is the point of rushing it at the eleventh hour?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Did we ever have a committee research any lawyers before, or we just appoint them?
Yes. Yes, we have.
There were three people interviewed last time.
These are, these are the minutes, so.
We put up for, we put up for resumes. And that's how many we got.
So Mr. Jasper is one of the ones that, uh, the board interviewed?
Yeah.
Last time.
And he didn't win last time, but-
Okay, and then, and Miss Ganji was the other one this week?
My Ganji was out of state.
He had a retainer, he needed a retainer and it wasn't, that wasn't in cards. We didn't have, we didn't have the frequency knowledge or no, realized it, so.
My, my position is, I mean, we talk about taxpayers here, we talk a lot about taxpayers paying taxpayers money, and, and that's what we have to be doing here. And so I don't see this stuff as any other issues ever dealing. Probably getting the best bank for the buck. I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
I feel, I feel yes, but, uh, the opposing view out there, Nathan?
I think, uh, you know, as far as the question of timing, uh, to me, this seems like it would be appropriate since, uh, we are going to have an attorney representing the board on our behalf at a, uh, another state, uh, board, uh, meeting. It would be appropriate for us to duly appoint him as our attorney and close the loop on this thing. And like Mike said, if we, uh, aren't happy for whatever reason, or if others want to bring in other candidates, we could certainly do that or entertain that.
My hi, my hindsight's twenty twenty, but I jumped ahead on the agenda where it would've been a follow-on. I, to hire him after reconsideration is, is really, we jumped it because we're on Schaub's presence, I wanted to make sure we did his, um, item thoroughly, so, because it was related, so that's, that's on me. George, you have comment?
We've got a quick couple of issues. My director, I, I'm kinda familiar with Hill City and Keystone, and they just pick an attorney, I don't, I don't, never seen him go out and bid or anything. Is that right or wrong, I don't know, but, but there's that precedent. And I've just gotta tell you folks, uh, I sat on August, what it was, August fourteenth, in a hearing in Pierre for my state senator. There were five lawyers sitting up there in front of, there was, just room for a few of us, real people. And Sarah Frankenstein got up and misrepresented the law to the judge. To me, that's just totally, totally unforgettable. She misrepresented the law to the judge, thank God, the, a couple of the other attorneys up there pointed out, she left out a key phrase. I just happen to know that statute from my years of fighting the government, fighting the bureaucracy, I knew that statute. That's unbelievable.
Mister, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes, dear.
Could I be all right?
Yes, dear.
The point that, that I'm particularly making is, is not, I don't care if we have her or don't, I don't care if she's good or bad, what, what I don't like is the process of if we voted somebody, we can get her right out, we can get somebody else, that's not a point, we don't have to degrade her or anything, or, or we just have to say that we don't want her. And then get somebody else and vote in somebody else to, to take her place.
But I just wanted to tell you firsthand, it's not hearsay, I've, and I wanted the worst way to say, hey, Judge, she's wrong, she left out a key part of the statute.
Well, if she's not gonna be on my board, yeah.
I understand, but just so you know who she is.
Well, she's not gonna be on my-
I don't know her, and I'm not suggesting that-
No, I understand, but-
I heard her.
But stuff like that really bothers me.
It's just an incentivization to-
It's, it's stuff like that that really, really bothers me.
Take care of this tonight, if we're Georgia, thanks.
Thank you.
I just don't think we should be doing that.
I, I think it's underhanded a little bit.
Bob? Bob?
I'd just like to, I kind of, I agree with George, Nathan, and have you ever seen, uh, Sarah Frankenstein here? And she's been our lawyer, why, why hasn't she been here? Is it because we didn't pay her, or what's?
We didn't ask her for one thing, but I'm not gonna stick up for her because I don't care, I just would like us to, uh, go about, if, if we voted for something, to stick to our vote, if we didn't like her, then we should, we should give her a letter in saying that we no longer wish her, her participation, and we should honestly take resumes from other people, and whoever we vote for would be the next one. I don't care if we, in fact, fire her, kind of like that's what it sounds, that's not my point, my point is sticking to what we did and, and going about getting, uh, changing in, in, in a, uh, consistent manner. It, it doesn't have anything to do with the actual people.
Agreement with her, or what?
We did, yes. We voted her in.
Is there a formal agreement, a letter, or a letter of intent basically to hire her as needed, I believe, all at once?
Yes, I believe, I believe we'll have to look through.
So there's something in writing, it's in the minutes that we, that-
Yeah.
It's board years old.
Right, so it would require another letter-
Yeah.
-to relieve her of that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I saw her in whatever, April, May, whatever time it was, and I asked her if she was still there, she said yes, but she'd never called. So.
But it's okay that we don't have her, that's not my point.
Right, oh, I agree, so it'd be a formal letter going out, if, if the board wanted to switch and she was relieved or whatever the case may be of her, of her duty.
Saying we don't want her. Yeah. Yeah, do it right.
A letter would go to her.
And then, then take resumes for-
Well, we don't send a letter out before we hire somebody else, though, that letter wouldn't go out first, the letter would go out after, Nathan?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call a vote.
Yeah.
Those in favor of, uh, switching, was the west side ordered?
Well, the way I have it written is, is right now, the motion is Chuck Jasper, our new attorney.
Will be our new attorney.
Yeah, that, that's, that's what's on the floor right now.
Right, right, that's what I was, it would be switching from, I'm just paraphrasing from Sarah to, um, for Chuck Jasper, that's consistent, I think.
Okay.
Effective tonight.
Okay, all right. I just-
So the motion includes Sarah Frankenstein's name?
No.
Well, I mean-
No, we're just vote, it's just a vote for-
Our charges, we could probably have more than one attorney.
I think the policy is, is talk about you, you need to designate one, but not designate.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, for a job.
I'm sorry, I don't know the policy specifically, Ken.
Uh, well, we're going, I have to read it, I have to read the motion as it was stated to me.
Okay.
The, the motion is Chuck Jasper, our new attorney, that's how you stated it to me.
Chuck Jasper will be our new attorney.
I didn't put will be, I, I, I better do that. Will be, eh, so that's what we're gonna vote on?
Right.
Okay.
Motion's clear. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
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 Number six, three, plus two, roll call. Boss?
Aye.
Birkey?
Aye.
Jovic?
Aye.
Geddy?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Mack?
Nay.
Myolanas?
Aye.
Duralu?
No.
Okay, five to three, motion carries.
Keep the finest eyes, please.
Six to three. Okay. Here are two items from directors. Jeanette? Here to start.
Do you want me to do it?
Items from directors, number sixteen.
Oh, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, it's Ken.
Bobby.
Bob?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, that we have the game fish and park department come tell us how the dredge project is going, or canyon light.
I don't know if that's a motion. Not necessarily a business item, listed on our agenda, so I'm not sure you need a motion, I think it's a-
I can check on that if I want.
I think it's just a phone call myself.
Okay.
So thank you for it.
Just ask them to give us-
Thanks for the formality, but-
Give us back our money.
Let's get it on the agenda next, next meeting, see if we get something from them. You know, the contact is there, Dan?
Uh, uh, no, not offhand, I'll find out. Yeah, so ba- basically, it was a hundred and fifty dollars paid to game fish and parks right before.
Hundred and fifty thousand, I got.
Five hundred thousand.
Galen's still waiting for the ant, you know who it is? Who we talked to earlier?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it, David.
Okay, 'cause that's holding your workout.
Right, be suspended until further notice of the dredgers. Hasn't put the first drop of fuel in it, so, oh, Dan Birkey, is that it, Bob?
Uh, I don't have anything.
Thomas?
Um, one quick thing, Dan, can you double check to make sure Emily Martinez is not on other things? I went to the garage website, because I typed in our name in a search engine, it popped up, it still has her as the contact on their website, so if you-
H two E's website?
Uh, garage.
Or the garage website.
Has her as a contact, and so, I don't know if you go as Emily Martinez on your off, I'm literally cool with that, but if you want-
He was doing great, but he lost his wig.
Depends on if I'm, if, if it's a bad thing, then I'll say I'm her, but I, I will check.
So that's on the garage website, they-
Yeah, of people in the building, they have the contact, and then, if you could double check the phone number, I don't know the phone number to the office, so I just wanna make sure that they're not calling H two E and asking for her, so, that's all I got.
Well, thank, thank you for that, and you, you pointed out, uh, um, septic form has her, and I'll get that, and Carol Theravie actually noticed that, so I appreciate all the input. It's hard to get all this stuff straightened out because it's so embedded in everything.
Got it, Ernie? James?
Dan Zero. I'm good.
Okay. All yours, Dan.
Okay, this should, should be quick. Budget was accepted by the Department of Revenue. The levy of two hundred thousand dollars is accepted by the county auditor, so we're all squared away there. New printers in service, which is nice. I just mentioned that I found a nice world GPS in our inventory, so if anybody can think of a use for it, that apparently was purchased when we were doing the, um, what's it called, the water sampling.
What, a water watch?
The water watch.
Was it purchased by?
Purchased by us, us, it's like a two hundred dollar item, um, if you go on Amazon, you can see the best price. Um, a couple of meetings I went to, I, the Pennington County Conservation District Board meeting met fourth of October, I really didn't know much about them, but they have the same geographic area we have, and they're, have a broader spectrum of what they're concerned with, but they primarily focus on, uh, erosion. And they sell trees, and they rent a no-till drill, they get twenty-one thousand dollars a year from the county. But, uh, income they get from-
Per quarter.
Per quarter? Oh, okay. Anyway, they get income from, it's like they're running a little business, but, um, you know, I thought maybe there's ways we can work together, for example, they're having a legislative forum, you know, where the, they're gonna meet the legislators in the districts that are in their region, which is the same as ours, so, there may be things like that we could think about collaborating with them, they also have a drone, by the way, with cameras. I, uh, and as far as samp, if we need wells to sample, there's like a rancher or two there that are downstream, because I was basically briefed them on some of the things worth that gonna do me. I went to a, the Nature Conservancy, um, they have a little banquet deal and a speaker, and I sent it out to you guys, if you remember, but I went to that, and it was kind of interesting, they're a non-governmental organization, but they're concerned with water, the environment, things like that, they had a speaker that talked about prairie streams and how if they're, if you just let them go and there aren't any beaver dams, they just keep digging deeper and deeper, and it messes up the ecosystem. Another, uh, thing I wanted to mention, um, Director Williams and I were talking to, forgot his name, he's a ex, he used to be mayor of Spearfish, and he offered to give us a tour of their power plant, and-
Jerry Colback?
Jerry Handback.
Jerry, yeah. And, and the interesting thing is, you know, they're not in our district, but that water goes into the aquifer, and the, the power plant actually does have an effect on that, so if anybody's interested, I'd probably do that just for myself, but, um, I don't have any set date or anything, but you could let me know.
You gotta notice out, you get a date, throw it out there, see if you can hook it.
That's it.
Public time?
Public time.
One comment. For next meeting, are you setting the meetings for two thousand nineteen, the meeting schedule? And I ask because can we, would you consider changing the meeting time to either one P M. or nine A M., or do monthly meetings at six P M. to omit the appearances of the ten, the forty-five P M. meeting times?
Item C has been discussed, the budget is for-
Is that been discussed?
Okay, yes, thank you, appreciate that input.
You don't like being out till one o'clock?
Maybe well, A M.
Bars are still open.
Wait, if you're for a journey-
You're gonna have to bring in a lawyer to speak now.
Anything else from the public? Bill, Jason, Joanne, Chuck, George? Mortoff, Carperchett? More of the carpet shit.
I apologize, I'm getting a little bit angry, but that's the way I feel, so I'm not gonna apologize, and I'm guessing that new Supreme Court justice isn't gonna apologize either, he got a pretty irate about. I've been falsely accused, falsely accused, falsely accused. And who the hell do we go to? I don't know, but thank God, you, at least the majority of you folks, kinda understand that government's a servant of the people, not the other way around. Most of the Pennington County government, reps of the government thinks that we're the servants, no, they're the servants. Thank you.
Rodney, Carol? Okay. Go ahead, Jeanette. Oh, excuse me, Chuck's up.
Two short comments. Number one, I mentioned this to Mike, and I guess it's something that you might consider. How many of you know that we have a pledge for South Dakota as well?
Pledge allegiance to the state.
To the state of South Dakota, similar to our pledge to the American flag. I told Mike about that, and I said, you know, maybe you folks would like to know what that pledge is, and if we do, I'll give it to you.
Can I guess? Under guard the people rule?
No, that's not it, that's the motto.
Be the motto.
It's the state motto. Okay, I'll provide that to you for the next meeting, no cost.
What a guy.
And then, while I was working on the petition, I came across a statute that I pointed out to Mike, that I'll have to dig it out again, just to make sure, but my memory tells me that the D E N R is required to do stream gauging. Thought that was rather interesting, since that was kind of a bone of contention with this board in the not-too-distant past. I'll find you that statute as well.
Your fish went for another seventy-five hundred?
No, no cost. That was part of the research for the five fifty.
This is hobby time. Thank you, Chuck. Jeanette, you wanna make that motion?
Oh, thanks, I make motion adjourned.
Very well. All the favors, say aye.
Hey, you didn't say no's.
I didn't ask for those. Hit your checks. The resounding...
I'll turn in the name tags for my check.
Actually, Williams has them, so...
Good luck with mom.
Myilana.
That finishes out, it sounds like.
You're gonna do with the style of your age, ninety, ninety seven, your mother?
Oh, there it is.
Oh, thank you, sir.
My grandpa made it to exactly eighty-nine and a half.
You're not gonna be able to buy, maybe get a cup of coffee.
Afraid to spend it, it might be... You got still like this dollar here. That's not good.